I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Can you please rise and join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, can you please call the roll?
President De Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Fran?
Here.
Trustee Jaworska?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pennacola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven. We have a quorum.
We will now open the public hearing on the village's two thousand and nineteen annual budget. The annual budget must be adopted before the beginning of the village's fiscal year. The annual budget has been available for public inspection since October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. The two thousand and eighteen annual budget and community investment program totals fifty-three million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. If any person would like to speak during the public hearing on the village's two thousand and nineteen annual budget, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and comment. All right, seeing no public comment, this will conclude the public hearing on the village's two thousand and nineteen annual budget, and it is now closed. We will proceed with the regular order of business. We will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to adjust the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. No public comment? So this will conclude this version of our public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen Village Board meeting?
No motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
You have a second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion carries and the minutes are now approved. The next item for business is to approve the warrant in the amount of three million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, seventy-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Do you have a motion?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under administration, there's a resolution authorizing the adoption of the updated two thousand and eighteen emergency operations plan for the village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor, yes. The village of Bensonville has a full-service emergency management agency. Don Schultz is the director of that. He is also the keeper of our emergency operations plan, our EOP. The EOP was last updated in November of two thousand and sixteen. This will provide some updates, and I'll let Don interject on the changes that we are seeing in the process.
Thank you. As the manager has stated, this is a update to our emergency operations plan. It's a two-year cycle, and that process begins with taking the sections of the plan that are pertinent to police, fire, public works, getting that before those department heads or second-in-commands to have them review it, come back to me, and make the updates and changes. It gets then submitted to the county, and then we're here in front of you for your approval and for this current two-year cycle of the plan. If there's any further questions, I would...
This is one of those things that we hope to never have to implement. The EOP prepares for the worst-case scenarios. Sometimes that does happen in communities, especially in this day and age, so it's important to have on hand.
Does the board have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Under Community Economic Development Committee, also, we have ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow a dog training facility at eight hundred through eight oh four West South Thordale Avenue in Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Weiger.
Scott.
Very briefly, but long and gentle, Mr. Mayor, this is a conditional use for...it's an indoor facility for training of dogs. The testimony at the public hearing was they would be there three days a week, four hours a day maximum, no overnights of animals, really no outdoor use at all. The staff had recommended approval, the CDC did as well, and before you for your consideration.
Is there any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance approving an amendment to conditional use permit for Thornton's Incorporated located at six oh one North Illinois Route eighty-three in Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Mr. Weiger.
This is, of course, the Thornton's at six oh one North Route eighty-three, northwest corner of Foster and eighty-three. The petition is to expand the diesel fueling facility on the eastern side of the property, adding two islands to that, and then making some site adjustments along Foster Avenue. There was obviously a lot of discussion on this. You'll recall that in October, Thornton's, who is here tonight, of course, appeared before you and ran through about nine items to try to address some of the concerns of the nearby neighborhood, and you took that under consideration. It's back here tonight. Initially, the staff had recommended approval, and then some of the citizen complaints came to light later on, and here we are tonight.
Now, I know we sent letters out, right?
Yes, sir.
How many do we get back, or how many questions do we get? How many do we send out, and how many do we get back roughly?
We got one letter back.
Okay, and we sent out...hundred or so?
I was gonna say several dozen. I don't remember.
Okay. So they pretty much came through with what we asked, and the...
Yeah, the one that came back was negative. I don't think there's anything that can be done to move them over. I mean, they're thoughtful questions. Thornton's has really committed on this one to make the improvements that this board's asked him as well as the residents, so I think they've done this, and they've been fair about this, they've been forthright, and have accomplished what they've been looking for.
Is there any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number three is an ordinance approving variances to allow signage at two ninety-two Devon Avenue in Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Scott.
You know, this is a relatively simple sign variation request on the rear of this multi-tenant building to assist truckers to get in and out. You can see that on the screen there. There are two signs that are thirty-two square feet, and then one sign is seventy-three square feet, so it's generically too many signs and a little too large. The staff had recommended approval to help traffic flow in the rear of these buildings. The CDC concurred with that recommendation, and the ordinance you have in your packet tonight is to approve these variation requests.
Is there any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number four is the ordinance denying a conditional use permit to allow a service station at thirteen oh one West Irving Park Road in Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll start with just explaining the mechanics of this. As it's presented, the board will be approving the denial, so to deny it will be a vote yes in the affirmative. Scott, do you want to talk about the background on the project?
Yes, sir. The background, this is a smaller property on the corner, northwest corner of Irving Park Road and Spruce Street. It had been a gas station historically in planner lingo of an existing non-conforming use. It's been closed for a number of years, four or more. The existing non-conforming use was abandoned, therefore it has to be entitled in order to reopen. Of course, since this gas station has been abandoned, a number of other gas stations have been approved here in the village, and the recommendation from the staff, as well as unanimous recommendation of the CDC at their November sixth public hearing, was to deny the conditional use that the conditions of approval found in our zoning ordinance in the state statute were not met by the applicant, and we recommend denial.
I know staff has been working with the owner and the prospective renter, I guess, on ideas for that location. Do we have any more information on that? Are we still kicking something around other than a service station?
We are trying out like the Dickens, yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Okay, so this is a motion to deny.
Deny. So by stating the affirmative, you are denying the request.
All right, so please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Let's just make sure we still try to work with them and see what else we can put on that corner, please. Number five is a consideration of the new Bensonville zoning ordinance. I believe the matter is only an informational item, and that the village manager and development director will discuss the proposed ordinance, right?
Yes, I'll let the community development directors kick this off, and I'll add some color commentary at the end.
This, as they say, is only something that planners can appreciate, although it does impact our residents and their quality of life. It goes way back. We began this in two thousand and fifteen with the comprehensive plan that we were fortunate enough to get a grant from CMAP, who's here tonight, to do that comprehensive plan, and then two years hence after that was completed, again, CMAP provided us with a grant to work with the staff to create the zoning ordinance to implement that vision that the Village Board had passed in the comprehensive plan. The goal of the ordinance itself is really to simplify, make it easier to understand. It proposes reducing twenty zoning districts to ten, elimination of some districts, industrial from four to two, commercial from four to two, things of that nature, a lot of graphics easy to use, et cetera, et cetera. We had extensive, extensive public participation in this, going back probably two years, Curtis, Jake, about two years, and I don't know what else you want me to say on this. We had workshops, our CDC served as the steering committee and spent many days and hours with staff and with CMAP staff going over concepts and ideas. There is information in your packet. After our last public hearing, or public meeting, public hearing at the CDC, we had...boy, I think there were sixty people in this room for that meeting. It was a great night. I know, Mayor, you were here to observe, so you'll see in the end of your packet, there is a list of about eight or ten items that were clarified based on those citizen recommendations at that meeting, those changes being made. One of the largest things that we have, and I don't know how we want to frame this, the request here is informational, but we do want to send it back to the CDC for one more tweaking of it relative to the southwest portion of the community and creating an overlay district to codify the county ordinance and to be annexed properties. So we've worked both with Montana and Welch, as well as an annexation attorney on that, and sent it to the CDC. You can get it back here in December with that one more addition to it.
I know during that meeting, there was a lot of discussion about auxiliary dwelling units, and I know that we're gonna be taking care of that, that we're gonna remove that from the equation?
Yes, sir, that was number one on the list, and it has been stricken from the...
One, two, and three on that list?
Yeah, exactly. And so that has been stricken from the ordinance. That is obviously the biggest issue that was presented at that public hearing. We knew it would be.
And I also want to say, you know, one of the big things is notifying property owners on this one. I want to say that with our attorney's help, with CMAP's help, and with the village staff, we've taken all reasonable and available means to notify the public of these changes, including mail, EMC signs, newspaper postings, and multiple papers, social media. We've done as much as we possibly could on this. So I want to...that's always a hairy item to get through, but I think we've done a great job on that. I also want to thank CMAP for their continued commitment on this. CMAP is out here at Music in the Parks with iPads and charat boards and having a blast on Wednesday nights with us, so it was good to have you guys out here. Thank you so much. This is really a win for property owners in town. This simplifies the code and levels the field between property owners and government. So this is a progressive way to do this, and I'm really proud of this, and this is probably one of the lasting legacies of this administration.
Does the board have any questions or concerns? All right, we'll move on to finance. Thank you, guys, thank you very much. Ordinance adopting the annual budget for the village of Bensonville for the fiscal year commencing January first, two thousand and nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
We'll let Mr. Thacker interject on this one.
Mr. President and the board of the trustees, as you guys know, we had our budget session, and we discussed our budget in detail, and thank you for having the patience to listen through the boring budget numbers, but it is what we do, and at the end of the day, we have fifty-three point nine million dollar in budget this year, which is six point sixty-seven percent lower than last year, but we are not cutting any services. We are adding more as and when we can, and we are trying to achieve efficiency and effectiveness whenever it's possible. Out of fifty-three point nine million dollar, eight million and twenty-eight thousand dollar will be spent on paying off the debt that we have on the file. Fourteen point one million dollar will be invested in the community in form of community investment plan, and thirty-one point eight million dollar will be used towards the operation of the day-to-day operation of the village. It also funds the police pension to its one point four million dollar, the required contribution that we have to make so that we can fund the pension by two thousand and forty. It also funds all the program, like Right Due Page. It also provides for theater, aquatic center, and all other community centers that we have to provide the services. At the end of the day, we also have to rely on property tax, but with efficiency and effectiveness, we are hoping for a moderate increase of one point ninety-nine percent, and we are proud to present this to you, that we are achieving this with less than two percent of property tax increases.
I do want to highlight that the only reason that we're raising the modest one point ninety-nine percent is to make the contributions to the police pension fund, which has been a goal of this administration, this board, to get that funding back to where it needs to be. Without that additional contribution, we would have kept property taxes flat here. So as everything else gets more expensive, we're doing everything we can to keep the most value to our residents and our businesses.
I guess what people have to realize is we're working...we're doing more with less.
Absolutely.
So we're dropping it, I mean, we're paying off debt, we're making sure everything is right in the village with less. The budget is less this year.
Correct.
We're paying off eight million dollars in debt this year.
Correct.
I mean, so we're holding our own, so that one point ninety-nine, we're proving to the residents that, you know, we're cutting anywhere and everywhere we can cut and not hurt the village.
Correct. Over the last three years, I think we averaged out to about one point two-five percent annual.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries, the ordinance is passed. Amen, thank you very much for all your hard work, staff, thank you very much for all your hard work, and it was our pleasure to be in those meetings with you.
Thank you. I appreciate all the efforts and help and time, and also the efforts that staff has put in it. Thank you so much.
Namely Sharon Guest, our assistant to the finance director. She's been wonderful in this whole process.
Moving on to number two is an ordinance adopting the two thousand and eighteen tax levy for the village of Bensonville, DuPage, and Cook Counties for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and eighteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So previously, we just approved the budget. This is how we pay for the budget, through the property tax levy. We have about a sixty million dollar budget. Five million of that comes from property taxes. Mr. Thacker, do you have any?
Sure. The total property tax that will be levied for two thousand and eighteen tax year, which will be paid by the residents in two thousand and nineteen, will be five million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, which is one point sixty-eight percent more at the end of the day compared to current taxes. So a two hundred thousand dollar house, which normally pays five hundred and eighty-six dollar in property tax that comes to village, that amount will be reduced from five eighty-six to five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar because of the inflationary factors. A senior with a two hundred thousand dollar house normally pays a tax from which five hundred and thirty-eight dollar comes to village, remaining goes to the other taxing agencies. That tax for next year will be around five hundred and twelve dollar for a two hundred thousand dollar house. Out of total tax, a resident pay out of hundred dollar, probably ten point eighty-seven percent comes to village, remaining goes to other taxing agencies. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number three is a resolution approving worker's compensation insurance coverage with Illinois Public Risk Fund. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll defer this to Mr. Ferguson.
We have Dane Maul from Alliant Misero in the audience. They've worked with us. We hired them last year to save us money. It's an eight point five percent increase on the work comp, staying with the same. The industry's gone up about nine percent, and we are going to do some programs where we get ten thousand dollar grants. So we feel that they've done the best for us, and we're in the right direction.
Dane, can you give us a thirty thousand-foot summary of the coverage?
Absolutely. My name's Dane Maul, I'm with Alliant Misero, and thank you for your confidence in being your insurance broker. So workers' compensation insurance is the coverage for your employee injuries. The two biggest things that drive workers' compensation coverage are the amount of payroll that you have year to year, which in most cases will increase and has increased, and then also loss experience. So are your employees getting injured, and we call that an experience modification factor. So as Gary mentioned, we have some work to do in the...we've negotiated some safety grants with the Illinois Public Risk Fund to help target training programs, safety programs, things like that, to help target our losses, target the ways employees get injured in public works departments and police departments, et cetera. So like I said, we work closely with IPRF, Illinois Public Risk Fund, to realize some of those things that are gonna help you lower some of your costs in the future.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number four is a resolution approving the liability insurance coverage with Travelers Insurance Company for the village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a motion.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So we ticked up a little bit on workers' comp previously. We're happy to say that we are able to achieve a little bit of savings in the liability insurance. I'll hand it back off to Dane to go over it.
Okay, I'm back. Working with staff, we thought it was prudent to obtain a competitive quotation, which we went out to the marketplace and did, and secured a quote, a competitive quote, from the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, and what we found was Travelers was still lower by about thirteen thousand dollars, and so overall, we ended up with about a two percent decrease in going with the Travelers program. Travelers covers a myriad of coverages for you, all of your liability coverages, your public officials liability, your employment practices liability, your law enforcement liability, slips, trips, and falls on public premises, those types of liability exposures, your property exposure for your buildings and your structures. We also have achieved coverage for cyber liability, for those...that emerging risk of cyber liability that's so important, as well as liquor liability and crime coverage as well. So all of that realized a two percent decrease in premium from last year's.
So yes, it is a quarter million dollars, which is a lot of money, but when you factor in all the exposure that we have as a unit of government, you know, police, public works, all that stuff, it's really...this is really an important thing to make sure that we're covered well, and Alliant Misero's done a good job to make sure that coverage stays intact.
Board have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number five is a resolution, TIC Financial Services as a voluntary employee life insurance service provider for the village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll handle this one real quick. This is a non-monetary item to the village. This is simply enrolling in a fringe benefit to our...for our employees to make them eligible. Cincinnati Life offers a guaranteed issue of life insurance policy, so if a employee wanted to opt into this for their own personal financial reasons, it would be a payroll deduction from them. There is no cost to this to the village.
Is there any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and ordinance is now approved. Moving on to the police department, ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage, and Cook County, Illinois, authorizing a police chief employment agreement with Dan Schultz. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll start off by making the introduction of Mr. Dan Schultz, who's in the audience with us tonight. Can Dan put your hand up? All right. Dan comes from a long line of experience working in public safety. In nineteen eighty-three, he began as a patrolman with the Schiller Park Police Department. He rose through the ranks as a detective, sergeant, sergeant's detective, all the way up through lieutenant, to chief of police for Schiller Park. So Dan's got a lot of experience with, over thirty years in experience. I know, Mary Dee Simone, you probably have some commentary on Dan's experience as a police officer, being one yourself.
I believe Dan's experience alone speaks for itself. I believe that the Village of Bensonville will be, it'll be a good fit for him. It'll be a different outlook, I guess, a different look into what we've been doing in the past. I just, I want everybody to kind of welcome him in, make him feel at home, and everybody can learn from each other.
I will say that I've had several meetings with Dan prior to tonight along with the village attorney, as well as the village consultant. I think we're all blown away with Dan's experience, his expertise, as well as how well-read he was on Bensonville. I think he knows more about the police budget than I, I'll admit that. He's delved into it pretty hard. So with that, we're going to approve a employment agreement with Dan tonight, authorizing me to execute that agreement. Mr. Village Attorney, do you have any comments on the terms of the agreement?
One part, an important part of the agreement for the board to understand is that Mr. Schultz is waiving any health, disability, life insurance, or any retirement benefits, so the village will not be paying any of those. I think that that's something that was negotiated, and it'll be a good cost savings to the village in that respect.
We'll also see a little bit of savings on salary, too.
Yes.
Is there any other questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
So...
The motion carries and ordinance is passed.
So what we'll do is Dan's gonna hit the, he's gonna hit the ground running tomorrow. Starting nine AM tomorrow, he'll be here. So with that, we'll need to swear Dan in, or Police Chief Schultz, if you will, and go from there. So Dan, if you could join us, and we'll invite your family up for pictures as well, too. Raise your right hand. I, Dan Schultz?
I, Dan Schultz.
Have been appointed to the position of police chief?
Have been appointed to the position of police chief?
In the Village of Bensonville?
In the Village of Bensonville.
In the counties of DuPage and Cook?
In the counties of DuPage and Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police chief?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police chief?
Of the Village of Bensonville?
Of the Village of Bensonville.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Dan, you want to get some pictures of the family? Mary Dee Simone, you want to stay up there? Got to sign it to make it official, right? Only with your signature. I also want to express my appreciation for Interim Chief Dooley, as well as Deputy Chief Lustro, for keeping the wheels on the bus over there at the police department. They're ready to hit the ground running, just as I am with our new police chief, and look forward to a new chapter of the Village of Bensonville Police Department.
Okay, moving on to public works. Number one is a resolution authorizing payment to Sean McGrath, DBA JNS Plumbing Incorporated of Elk Grove Village, Illinois, for the emergency repair of a sanitary sewer at one seventy South Addison Street, in the not-to-exceed amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'm going to defer the next fifteen items to Public Works Director Joe Karachi.
I do apologize, since the budget was approved, I'm trying to spread this over the next two months. One item in front of you currently is an emergency repair that was experienced back on August tenth of this year. We actually hired a contractor to do a routine repair that turned ugly once they started digging into the ground. So what was a fifty-six hundred dollar repair turned into a fourteen thousand, six hundred dollar repair. We found some storm sewer that was cracked and chased that for about twenty feet of repair. And then as we were connecting the sewer to the main, there was a crack in the main and a blowout in the mains, we fixed that as well. So while we had it open, we had the contractor that we hired originally to do the work perform the work. They completed that work and have invoiced us, so this is over our authority. We're asking for a retroactive approval of this item.
Board, have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Morton Salt Incorporated for the purchase of six hundred tons of bulk rock salt in a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. May I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Rock salt, we get it.
Rock salt.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a one, of year one of a four-year contract with Winkler's Tree Service Incorporated for the twenty-nineteen Parkway Tree Planting, I'm sorry, Tree Pruning Program, in the not-to-exceed amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is our annual pruning program. This will cover zone one and zone two, which is everything north of Irving Park Road. Contractor prunes trees that are fifteen inches in diameter and greater. Village staff prunes trees that are under that diameter. We did bid this out, we had one submitted bid from Winkler Tree Service. Winkler has been performing this program for us since twenty-eleven, very familiar with them. So even though there was only one bidder, their price was only five thousand dollars more than it was back in twenty-eleven. So we felt that increase was warranted, and they have done excellent work for us over the past seven years. So it's our recommendation to approve.
I will say that they do a much better job than ComEd tree contractors who recently came through town.
Really?
Yeah.
Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number four is a resolution authorizing the execution of year two of a two-year contract with Steve Piper and Sons Incorporated for the twenty-nineteen Parkway Tree Removal and Stump Grinding Program in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is another program that we do for our forestry management programs, tree removal and stump grinding. This is the removal of dead trees, diseased trees throughout town. We bid this project out last year, Steve Piper was the lowest bidder of, I believe, six bidders at that time. They have performed this project, this program for us for about six years. We're very happy with their work. They remove trees that are greater than twenty-one inches in diameter and stump grind the stumps that remain. So we budget twenty thousand dollars a year for this program, and it's our recommendation to award the contract, year two, to Steve Piper.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Ad Lawn Landscaping Incorporated for lawn maintenance services in the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-three thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is our contract for cutting grass, basically at fifty-six locations throughout town. We did bid this out this year. We had four bidders respond to the bid. Ad Lawn was the lowest of the four bidders at seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Ad Lawn actually did purchase Green Horizons, who was our previous lawn care maintenance program contractor. Once they purchased them, they were able to correct a lot of the negative components that Green Horizons provided to us, so they've been working for us for the last three months, doing an admirable job, and we're actually looking forward to them moving forward with this program for the next two years.
Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number six is a resolution authorizing the execution of a GIS consortium service provider contract with Municipal GIS Partners Incorporated for the twenty-nineteen calendar year in the not-to-exceed amount of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
As you mentioned, this is the renewal of our contract agreement with MGP. They are our service provider for a GIS consortium. Basically, every department in the village uses GIS in one way or another during the year. It's very crucial to our work management, asset management program, which we'll talk about in a little bit. The cost this year is actually about two thousand dollars less than it was last year, so we're expecting a good product out of MGP again, and it's our recommendation to approve.
Is there any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number seven is a resolution authorizing year one of a two-year contract with Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Incorporated for mosquito abatement services in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-six thousand, thirty-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Although it does appear that Clark kind of has a monopoly on the mosquito abatement in the area, Chicago Land area, they do provide a very high service to the Village of Bensonville and have been for decades. They have not increased their prices for the village since twenty-eleven. Some of the services that they provide is surveillance and monitoring of mosquito abatement throughout the village. They do inspect a number of traps in town every single week. They do larval and adult control of mosquitoes. They do a number of sprays. They spray our Music in the Park area every time before the Music in the Park, before Liberty Fest. They do other sprays throughout the season to capture both adult and larval insects. They also provide briquettes, which our staff puts into our catch basins to help control mosquitoes that come out of our storm sewer. So the cost of the program is twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. The cost of the briquettes is six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, so it's our recommendation to approve the total of those two at thirty-six thousand, thirty-five dollars.
And we're lucky enough to have the mosquito guy on our staff, right?
Yes, as your mosquito abatement commissioner for the DuPage County Mosquito Abatement Task Force, I am happy to report that Zika nor West Nile has been identified in the Village of Bensonville.
So we're ahead of the game.
Good job, Evan.
We haven't met in three years.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Do I still have everybody with me? We only have about eight more items left.
Halfway there.
Number eight is a resolution authorizing the approval of a purchase order to Cardiograph Systems Incorporated for year one of a three-year purchase agreement for the annual maintenance of the work management system in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, sixteen cents. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Still moved.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I lost some, but that's okay. Every department, basically, in the village uses Cardiograph in one way, shape, or form. It's very crucial to public works, it's our work management system, our asset management system. It's also utilized as our customer response system in our portal. So basically, anytime a person calls in the village hall, their request gets put into Cardiograph, it gets routed to the correct department, the correct person, so it really is kind of what runs the village. We've been using Cardiograph for about three years successfully. We're looking at the next three-year agreement here. Year one of it is thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. It includes one hundred licenses, support, and upgrades, as well as some integration that we're looking forward to this year. So we have budgeted thirty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars, so it's within our budget, and it's our recommendation to approve.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number nine is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract extension with Stewart Spreading Incorporated for sludge hauling and land application in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is always our favorite discussion of the year. Sludge is a byproduct of our wastewater treatment process. Two options to remove the sludge are to land-apply or to land-fill. Land application is a less expensive and environmentally beneficial option for us. Stewart Spreading has been managing our program for over six years. It includes the scientific evaluation of the sludge samples, the tracking and reporting to the EPA, loading and hauling the product, and agreements with farms in the Illinois area that actually accept our sludge as fertilizer. So Stewart Spreading has agreed to continue their contract without a CPI increase that was in their original contract. So our price for the two thousand and nineteen year is, again, at nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents a cubic yard. We are requesting a total amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the number that we budgeted in the budget.
Any sludge questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number ten is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Sean Milnis, DBA CTS Services LLC for the Senior Disabled Snow Removal Program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this and the next item are two contractors that have agreed to work with us on our senior snowplow program. I have two more contractors in waiting right now. So this is the second year of our program. I think it went very well last year. We didn't have a lot of events that occurred, but for those that did, I think the program went very well. We are making a couple of tweaks to the program this year where we're simplifying it a little bit. So basically, it's going to be a fifteen dollar charge to a senior resident if they do not have sidewalk in front of their house, and a twenty dollar charge if they do. So we pay twice as much to the contractor, so it is a true fifty-fifty program this year. So Sean and Tomas are both contractors that have worked with us on either the senior snowplow program or the senior grass-cutting program, so we're happy to have them back to do this program for us this year.
How many people did we have last year?
Last year, we had sixty-four applicants that participated. We are already at fifty-five applicants for this year, and it seems like they come in every day.
Once the snow falls. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number eleven is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Tomas Herrera Landscaping for the Senior Disabled Snow Removal Program. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion, same as the previous? We have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pennicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number twelve is a resolution approving an acquisition of the necessary right-of-way permanent and/or temporary easements for SCP two zero zero three D dash nineteen LLC of seven hundred West Irving Park Road in the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars related to the Church Road TAP TCM project. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?[1455.11]
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
So, if you recall, there were five properties that were necessary to attain some sort of land acquisition from. This is the last of the five, this is the CVS property at Church and Irving Park Road. The actual owners are that weird LLC that's in there, I'm not sure how they came up with that name, but we have negotiated through our appraisers and our contractors, a cost of seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars for both right-of-way and temporary easement at that location, so this will secure all of the easements we need so that we can put this project to IDOT, have it let, and construct it next summer.
Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number thirteen is a resolution authorizing the sole source purchase of Tide Flex Mixing System to be installed at the Belmont Avenue Water Tower in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-eight thousand, eighty-four dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
So, these next two items are actually the purchase of, and then the installation of a mixing system for our Belmont Water Tank. One of the things that we have struggled with over the last couple of years has been a chlorine residual issue over at our Belmont Water Tank. Our core function is to provide good quality drinking water to our residents, we do that every single day of the year. Sometimes, it's a little bit more of a challenge than others, so in the, in the summertime, when the temperature gets hot, we have difficulty sometimes keeping the chlorine residual where it needs to be to approve, seek the approval of the IEP. We sought the advice of a couple of professionals on this, and expertise on this, and the recommendation is to put in a mixing system within the tower to keep the water moving, so when water heats up and it doesn't move around, it becomes stagnant, and the chlorine tends to release from the water, so we want to make sure that we are keeping the water moving, keeping[1347.66]